Please rise and welcome to the pledge reading. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America, the free, democratic, healthy, honest, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of an fire emergency or alarm system. Please note the emergency situation that occurred in the building. This time we request everyone to be in a comfortable and quiet place for the operation. Additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
Yes, I understand is under reinforcement by the personnel. The personnel has resigned from the positions. And also under revision and then I want to say to the substitute.
In such agenda, can I have a motion for run through eight please? And a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Five communications correspondence from the New York State Department of Transportation.
Yes, as I shared with you in my quick notes, the New York State Department of Transportation denied my request to extend the speed limit into the high school. However, they did put some new school crossing signs at the crosswalk and upgraded existing crosswalks. Other inspection correspondence, you had your backup notes, you had a great one coming week last week. See the various one coming winners. Well, it was a wonderful week of celebrations. Respect to spirit, we also handed out tonight on the Saturday leaders, which is their student of month program. Shared with you our winners of six through twelve. One other thing is that recently, a practitioner I attended the goal with her hands, the Jensen County Fairgrounds. Twenty eight schools over 15 students, especially type businesses that represent great data for our students. See the times and careers that exist out there with your hands. So wonderful time. And again, since our last meeting, we have a elementary middle high school. Open access for our students.
On the guest of the board, I want to start with the teachers.
I just think about you, if you're still at the board, but being in the day, so we can test it, but start with parents. Amy's been down with Aaron since we last met. She is teaching our career in technology education program at the middle level. Aaron comes to us with a top years of teaching experience at age nine. Prior to that, she worked in history, like professional developer in business. Aaron does live in our community. Her kids attend school here since she's taken us to home. And we talk a lot about her passion for teaching financial literacy and probably more importantly, her desire to connect with students with her strong academic skill. Next up is Burton Howell. Burton is done quickly, the most experienced here this evening, which is super exciting for us. Such a fine person has been teaching for thirty three years at the state's main schools. I actually learned during our interview process that he was the fastest person for you ever. Burton was a student teaching private and teaching city auto company. And they called and he went over there and just started teaching. Burton is, given to us, was certainly not doing one of my favorite things that he made during the interview process was I didn't learn to teach twice. I believe that I think our kids are experiencing that already with your following up on social media. You will know that Burton has already secured ground for our school and teaching our kids to measure his pay per to go like on a ranking as he is teaching her sign. Welcome Burton. Last was the lady who may not least is very hardy. Where it is teaching our career in technology education at the high school, I follow with a focus more on computer information systems. Larry comes to us with ten years of experience, having taught at Jensen Valley Boggs. He actually was in charge of the computer information systems program there. He's already done his ticket to nationals, he tells me, so one of the most important things to know out there is he's super competitive. At this time teaching, he has taken students out of the academy, like future listeners, viewers of America. Not only state competitions, but also to nationals for his children, not just each year. And last week, he's in pain. The talent of our leaders has already shined through inside this heart of ours. Welcome Burton.
Welcome all of you. And Mr. Eric Lundberg. CPA from Neller, that's our company.
The honor period of twenty one, twenty two years. Everything was smooth, made in very all essence. Just how we got, maybe in the key table, there's something that's just good. Exactly, there's some, which is all for the happy of. Some of the things we discussed were the general month months loans increased by about one point seven million. School lunch month and that period surplus for two years ago now. But it is something that was still not behind the curve, going forward. And the district was also able to fund this service here. We didn't see any of the numbers that we knew. But like how many offices, no way of priorities. I would say people has been heard around there. Overall, everybody can turn on this, it's always a good office. And the greatest recommendations that we have made prior to this were addressed by the business office. If not a necessary recommendation, which we always have to do. A lot of good things. Any questions?
We will add that later in new business. Mrs. Moose, has anybody signed up? Have everybody signed up for a couple of programs here? Superintendent's report, just call us on it.
Yes, we had a Dr. Chanel. We were told about shared premium New York State. Their results.
What you have in front of you in your work back end, you have the LA test. Can you give me a rest for a little look at these because when you look at any type of state test and you want to look at how age over time, if there are trends. One of the things to look at, you'll notice is the read or anything that you have in front of you. Last year it was highlighted red, and that was actually a regular LA test for grades three through eight. In two thousand and twenty and twenty one, we highlighted that in only simply because that was kind of a modified version of the test and we took only part of one. So I would say it looked at the scores. We also included in there three years that we do have data that goes right up under eight years on these tests. So when you look at, we include that, but for the purpose of this presentation, we include it three years, but we like to look at trends. And when you start looking at the trends here. This was almost pandemic testing. This was the first time that the kids took the exam. At elementary level, this was pretty significant because usually our students in grades three, that's the first time they take a test like this. Our fifth graders really had interrupted test keeping schools during the pandemic, like they didn't have a test or a modified version of the test and finally they have the real test. So I did wonder how students were going to perform. I spoke with Mr. Malasani about it. I said, it appears like our kids are not like, for seven years ago, we started to use the test. And that's what our students, our students, they just seem nervous about taking a standardized measure. But when we got the results, they really performed how we did in the past. So when you look at grades three, for example. We had a, the average last on that test was sixteen percent, I mean, level three or four, which would be a passing rate on that test. We had sixty eight percent of the students earned a three or four. And the year before, you can see that was probably a little bit inflated because there wasn't a rating portion of the test. But when you look historically back to eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, sixteen, seventeen, you'll see that that's about how we even performed in the past. Grades four, we performed at fifty eight percent. Last year was eighty percent of the rating portion was not there. That's what that's giving, that's was challenging for students. But if we look back, it was very much the same player. In both those grades, you will see that when we compare ourselves to our OS district, if we were first out of twenty two schools. And that's not uncommon for California. Your students perform very well, a lot of us. So out of the twenty two schools, you get those percentage rates, the higher twenty two school district from OS district, we were first. In grade five, you will see a lower score than we've seen recently, but if you look back about eight years ago, that wasn't too far off of where we were. Grade five was a twenty five percent rate in level three and four. And if you look at the other twenty years before the state average, you'll see it's thirty two percent. And then you'll see thirty eight, thirty four, thirty three, which is about seven years back, but we're on twenty seven here, twenty seven percent. So this is not uncommon. And it's one of those tests, it can be a difficult exam for kids, and I've shared this with you over the years. And if kids have a handy experience in grades three, four, five, T, they know the exams, it's just a difficult task for kids. When we don't hit to the data, when we started looking at it, I was looking at it with Michelle, right now with the fifth grade team. There are probably fifteen kids that if they had seven to eight more points on the test, would be a lot of great. And when you have a sample size of six, that changes things quite a bit. So the fix, I don't think is a dramatic one. I think getting kids used to taking the test. And getting them used to that type of level of rigor and expectation, especially in the area of writing. I think it's going to be an easy thing for us to correct it and back in there. Even that being said, we were twelve out of the twenty two schools this year. So that's how we perform in California.
Tell them this test is all.
No, no, nope. Okay, just a little bit. I don't know how to be accurate, so Michelle, make sure I remember this correctly. We are, we've been waiting to do computer based testing. And one thing that we paused on is the region's exams are computer based. So Mr. Malasani advised, we just said, well, we're preparing kids for these tests and then the changes in the end, what, why do we? And really, the last few years, we have been watching other schools' outcomes. And quite honestly, on all four, computer based testing, but also I give our kids every advantage on these events that perform. So it's kind of one of these dilemmas. I think that kids would like to get the test, to take the test in that format. What we are hearing from teachers who correct them is sometimes the kids' responses are shorter, the written portions when they correct them. They see in the elementary level, when kids respond in writing, they get more robust answers, a little more clear, you know, clarity on the math explanation. When they score tests from other schools that are computer based, they say they're very short. And if I ask if you would, typing skills, all those prerequisite skills to perform in there. They will be required us to go, and we've seen this coming, it's not a surprise. I think that kids would like to begin. I love learning the process of doing is deciding whether we want to do that this upcoming school year. Or do we want to have a year where we kind of play out the skills that let each kid with each grade level. We have, it's not, Michelle, the fifth grade in two years, we may have to take.
This year to get our plan in order, but next year, what the state is saying is grade five and eight have to be conservative. For all three subject areas, we only math and. And then the following year, they're adding two more, and then by third year, it's.
That's pretty relaxed compared to what we're in three years.
Yeah, they, yeah, they. Well, I think everyone now after the pandemic, people add the infrastructure. And I think, but honestly, most people are pretty comfortable with that. I think that's a move forward. I would say we're going to do that this, we're making a decision that order the test. Either we're going to do it this year or I'm going to meet with the teachers and see if we want to have a year just to plan the program, because it's going to be a long year. And then phase it in next year. I'm going to say wait much longer than that. We talked, sometimes you just gotta pull the game, you know, let the kids add. I think the kids will, well, not, we're not scared of that.
I'll start with online testing, just because that's where we're at. I personally, and we hope that we have. Little school teams seems to be almost the same way. It's kind of holding that further ready for. We do use a couple of tools, ADOT training is something that our teachers are very accustomed to. And just basically, you are ADOT training and some ADOT tools inside your software expert here. What we will see on the state assessment, it's going to take it online. I think for our teachers, we start getting our kids ready for that, this and there. Your college board assessments are already online and you're going very quickly in that direction as well. So I think the region's exams are only pulled out. And in the end, I think if you guys find those kids once they graduate from high school, well, they'll learn, they'll be able to pencil into college. These factors experience, I have to open my kids, and something that kids talk about when they come back to visit us. Almost everything they do kind of turns into this online component, or there's been a lot of that, where it was a very, very little cable pencil. I do think we move those because as long as our teachers are ready for that, then we can put a support plan for our kids to be successful in places. So the sixth and eighth grade LA will just are there, I'll compare the date, that really what you're looking at here is groups of kids that, you know. They kind of interrupted education, having all one, I don't know, the address that. I think if you were to ask teachers prior to even seeing these results, teachers would have told you that literacy is hard, writing is hard as well. And I want to start with the test that stays very, that requires to write to that demand. We had, I think, I'm not the reason, so we went over what we bought the time we need for making this test. We watched some very persistent internal learners that may try to improve. I think you will see that effort was completely increased under the happens, maybe they would play that into what is required. But for me, I'm not looking at this data, and I like to look at where we rank as the twenty, as the twenty two. As long as we share, I'm surprised it's asking about all of them already. Our teachers are still telling kids have topics, they are no better, this is my conclusion, we would like to see sort of, we fare very well on state assessment results.
Math is always an area that's been strong for California. One is I can, it's been an area that we've done well, and you'll see it well again. In grade three, we had seventy seven percent of our kids scored level three or four, and the state average was forty percent. This look historically back, that's consistent. In grade four, we had sixty three percent earned on a level three or four, and the state average is thirty five. Look back and that's pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past, with ranked first in our OS region. And in grade five, we had forty eight percent, state average is thirty one percent. And that's a little lower, but not pretty much within the range. We have done better. But I think this again, if you, and I said this to our parents, if you took this fifth grade test as an adult, I think you would see that it was a difficult task. If kids see those types of questions and that type of pressure for the first time, I think our kids did well. We're third out of our twenty two core school districts. Because we still continue to have districts call us about what we're doing in math to keep that level up. And really, it's consistency with our program. Michelle's been a nice job, prior to Sinclair. Our teachers have been very consistent in keeping our curriculum together, even through the pandemic. Of course, seeing good results.
Math results at the middle level, definitely not where we would like to see them as team. When you're looking at that data there, you definitely see the difference in math from what we were more accustomed to, to how kids performed this past year. So this year, in grades six and seven, we're actually piloting a new computerized program to try to help our kids get what I would call just right feedback. So Carnegie Math is one of the leaders in designing mathematical online components for kids to really be able to just ask where to add another learning assist. So that pilot is happening across all of grades six, and it's happening in grades seven, where a group of students that have been accelerated, where we're moving from seven grade into eighth grade algebra. Just to try to see if this program helps identify a little bit more discreetly what some of the skills are that are, which means us to show it off for them. Overall, and generally, we do see critics with many declines there.
For the New York State science test, this was actually a surprise to us. We did not go start of the school year, and they said, we're going to have a science test. And along the old, they threw it out and said, yes, you are, we're taking a little weight of it. And you don't think that's a big thing, but we really made the shift to teaching our new ESP kids, which are really to the new, to the new science standards. So they're kind of, we're teaching in a new manner of the testing as we're performing. Which is interesting, but the test has never been difficult for our kids. But we did score a little lower than we had in the past. Usually our, we have about ninety four, ninety five to ninety eight percent of our kids' score, the passing rate. And this year, we had eighty four percent. And I met with Mr. Jacob, who administered the test, and I was just helping him pack up at the end, and I said, so how's the test? He just said, they don't know how to measure. And it's kind of historical, if I look back at my teaching career, measurement's a tough thing for kids. But when you think back to the instruction we engaged them in during the pandemic. We took a lot of the experiments, we took a lot of the things out of their hands. It used to be like a cooperative group, you know, the science experiments. Now we're having, we're having our sixth team apart, and guess what, we're doing a lot of measuring. So now we put it into that arena, and lo and behold, they had difficulty. But it really, I don't think it was a, it's not a, I'm not, there isn't anything shocking about it, but it's actually quite easy to fix. But this year, we will not have a science test, there's going to be a pause, and then actually, the science test is going in the fifth grade. And that's where things are going to change quite a bit for us. Because they're talking about having these inquiries that the kids have to do, almost like lab hours, like they do in high school for elementary students. And we're still waiting for these inquiries, I keep looking every day and see if they release them. They're supposed to release them in the next week or so, and then we can get our, if they have a list of them, and they have all the resources you need, but ain't your hands on the actual test. Once we get those, we will move forward the team and figure out how that has to look. One of the things that we have talked about in fifth grade, and it's not a new thing we've talked about, is even the possibility of departmentalization in fifth grade. If it requires a lot of lab time, we want to give our kids the time and give someone the expertise. We're actually in a good position because we have a new team. We have Alan Macy Flynn, who's rejoined us because of just a teacher moving to another district. Which also buys us some time to really look for a teacher with perhaps the science skills, which is not a given in elementary school. There are some people that are science teachers in high school. In the elementary school, you'll find a few of them, a group of people. So it may give us an opportunity to focus and streamline our structure, integrate and get ready for these tests. So that's, that's something we'll be using. So this really is a test of, that test won't really be speaking anymore.
So back a few meetings ago, Director Meyer did present to you all the changes that were expected in New York State on the science exams and the framework that's coming in. So this year, we are under a science curriculum review, both at the elementary level and at the middle high school. So when I was back to the conference on today, and did spend time with our science engineers, to be able to talk about the process that we're going to go through. So you're going to see changes in the way that our curriculum is laid out, so that we are giving them that job, which is in the back now, to be active teaching of tests. Like Mr. Holder said, we have this mentalist of companies that we have to buy, so clearly, they have something that has to let everybody have to do. They look for these supplies. But a supply list is vastly different and giving teachers examples of what some of the new activities were. So much like Davey said, across grades six through eight, we have not had science lab minute requirements. So it really was the curriculum that you had designed and how if you're going to see which kids would be doing the house, who's really well taught, teaching in terms of curriculum design. Now you're going to see some under the high school, the twelve hundred lab minutes is going to be added, if you did math on that, that's about fourteen whole instructional class time for us, eighty five and a half. Fourteen whole days really spent doing some sort of lab research, hands on. How teachers decide to do that at the high school, it varies. Sometimes a lab takes an entire block, sometimes you see a lab stretch out over the course of three days while instruction happens for maybe forty seven minutes of class, and then the next forty seven minutes, you need to add. So that same flexibility will be found as we're doing our reading online, across the level. But we definitely are going to have to take this number where certainly, Tyler and Monford, we do not be expecting to see any of our, both these teams coming in. They're bottom of the pack. So this is a conversation that we've already had very quickly about short term and long term pressure. Short term pressure, what are we going to do this year immediately, right away, to really make sure that our eighth graders access for this exam are ready to go. Including having conversations around our accelerated grade extended kids. By the time our seventh graders finish, it's on the way to seven, they actually already completed the A grade curriculum. So maybe qualify us to this exam. Please don't let that kind of confuse you, because when you're comparing us to other, other schools in our OS, it's known that almost no one possesses their accelerated kids. So it is very common to see that in advanced level science, like in grade, where all your, all your accelerated kids, we're, we're class of like six. And anywhere from eleven to twenty kids are not taking that test because they're accelerated, they're taking living environment rejects instead of this assessment. But that, that's pretty standard, so this number is still a pretty real number for how our eighth graders are going to come into the exam. But I'm not opposed to adding the seventh graders in there to go ahead and just measure our seventh graders to get an idea of what that curriculum output looks like for us, what our acceleration is. I think that's imperative, it's imperative reminder to really helping teachers sort of dig down through, is it a, is it a curriculum issue? Is it the way that we're mapping what we're teaching in eighth grade? I would argue, anytime you see an assessment result that comes in slow, probably we are talking about the performance that is underperforming. And not just the students that are taking that test. So trying to figure out which units we're teaching and what the sequence levels are from grade six to eight. And then how are we spiraling some form of review? So if the eighth grade test is measuring something that we taught to us in grade seven, how are we spiraling in teaching to make sure that the kids have lots of opportunities to revisit that material? To not, to reach out to, to have a consistent opportunity to practice. So you're going to see lots of changes that are coming in the way that we are stacking in the process.
Alright, so everybody should have their packet at the American Management Plan update, it has a town up in two thousand and one two. This is just disdain of clients with, this is federal money that was given to school districts. And this is just disdain of clients, everything's reported on website, it's also being posted on website after we. So pretty much what the federal government wants us to do is make sure that this plan has been updated or it was looked at. And what the school district said is we will do this every six months. So every six months, you can expect this, a little update at every board meeting, just talking about the plan, where we're currently at. Where we're currently at, and if there's been any modifications to the plan. So pretty much this money, along with the coronavirus relief response supplemental act, was given to combat learning loss because of COVID. And also social, emotional implications that was brought out because of COVID. So a lot of students, because they weren't actually in the classroom, their studies, everything has been affected by that. So this money has really been given to the schools to try to combat that. So the school district, in our original plan, we talked about with building level administration, the board of education, different stakeholders within the district. And actually, we shared that in our policy sheet back in July of two thousand and twenty one. We decided to spend this money on teacher salaries, benefits. You'll see mascot changes, that will have modifications to it. After school clubs, additional learning opportunities, summer school learning opportunities, and other original opportunities for our students. So as of six thirty two thousand and twenty two, everything's been working well. We have had one modification that was submitted through an amendment to the original budget, and that was for the school mascot. So every expense that deals with that mascot is now running through the art grant. And I think it's specifically art ninety percent. And I think it's specifically art ninety percent grant goes in at the bottom of that. So in the middle of that page, it'll kind of just give you updates where we're currently at. And it's just, in addition, art can see above it is the Carissa. Again, that's a coronavirus, uh, response relief act. Uh, we were given about seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. We spent all of that in the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We had until September of twenty-three to spend it. We just spent all in year one and chose to use that money to the capital reserve. And we did that at the end of, uh, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So you'll see there's no money remaining there. Uh, there is six different art grants that came out. There's the art grant B A, which is used for special education students. Uh, there's two different sections, one is for pre-K, the other is K-12. So we're getting a little money there. And then the other four art grants, the five percent, one percent, one percent, ninety percent, are used on learning loss. And specifically those one percent is used for summer school and after-school activities. That's why you see that. So at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two, we spent a total of just over a million dollars on a two-point-six-million-dollar budget. So we're left, put about one-point-six, one-five million dollars remaining. Um, specifically our art, Carissa, again, we can use that in one year and it's totally fine. Art, we can only use a maximum of sixty-two and a half percent per year because it's got to be used at least twelve and a half percent over four years. So twelve and a half times four is fifty percent. The other fifty percent can be used at any time. So fifty percent plus one year is twelve and a half percent. This is sixty-two and a half percent that's what we spent. And the minimum spending requirement is twelve and a half percent. You'll see at the bottom there, I just put some numbers to it. Uh, the full art budget is just under one-point-nine million. Twelve and a half percent of that is just over two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. And sixty-two and a half percent is just shy of one-point-two million. And within the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, I tell you, we've spent just over two-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars. So we're over the minimum and under the maximum. So we're in for fine. Uh, again, this will be posted to our website and, uh, over every six months or more, or maybe. So with that, any questions? Okay, thank you.
New business number two, acceptance of the annual audit report. Resolved for education upon recognition of superintendent. Accept the annual audit report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and prepared by the, uh, accounting audit firm and presented to us, uh, from guests in the door. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And second?
Yep.
Any discussion? And that was also presented fully to the board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion is clear. New business number three, corrective action plan for the management letter from the independent external audit report. The board of education, on the recommendation of the superintendent, approved corrective action plan for the independent external audit report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Motion, please. And a second? Any discussion? Again, this was on board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion's clear. New business number four, approval of out-of-state student transfer. Resolved at board of education on the recommendation of superintendent. Approved the request of senior class to participate in an out-of-state overnight field trip to University of New York for Leno Florida for March eighteenth, twenty twenty-three through March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Per the regulations set forth by Board Policy Number eight-four-six-L field trips. Cost, cost for chaperones will be passed on to the price of the student fee. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second? Any discussion? It's the first senior trip since COVID, right?
That's true.
You didn't have to see it, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion is clear. New business number five, a draft of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget calendar. This is, this is just a timeline to develop our twenty-three, twenty-four school budget. So this is the past years. Um, we just have to do, if there were two things, maybe we'd need budget. Running change that you see there is, uh, look it up, a little bit to show. Is where it says the May thirty-first legal notice, we changed that to May first, March thirty-first. That's the only change against a draft form for you. But to approve that, next meeting. Did we also adjust, uh, handle, like, here? No, we decided to keep it the same. That is a point. It is a point. Okay, thank you. Any other questions about that? Want any, um, adjustments to it? If you don't have any. All right. New business number six, approval of additional substitute grades. Resolved at board of education upon recognition of superintendent, approved the following additional substitute grades for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. Include, um, substitute attendants, clerk secretary, presentation director, uh, substitute teacher aide, substitute chaperone. That's what's been. Motion, please.
Yep.
And a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Period. Number seven, adjustment of tax bills. Resolved at board of education upon the recognition of superintendent. Reduce the following tax bills due to clerical errors by the Town of Cleveland. Labor tax bills two-zero-eight dot twelve dash one dash fourteen and two-zero-eight dot zero-one dash one dash one point one. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Revision to Board Policy Number one-five-one-zero, regular board meetings and rules. Resolved at board of education upon the recognition of superintendent. Revised Policy Number one-five-one-zero, regular board meetings and rules according to parliamentary procedure. Any motion, please?
I'll make it.
And a second?
Yep.
Okay, so, and for discussion? Um, this is specifically the, um, provisions to public forum. Um, for the official record to, to go through how we've gotten here. Um, through the board evaluation system, the board identified that we wanted to improve the function and effectiveness of public forum. Uh, to spread that process, we invited the district attorney to a meeting to review public forum laws and best practices. It was never our intention to restrict participation. The attorney was simply advising us of our legal rights and responsibilities. Through this presentation, um, and board member feedback, we recognized that we do have good policy and, um, we just needed to facilitate the execution of that policy with fidelity. This motion addresses a portion of our policy that was identified for revision. The current policy allowed only for district residents to speak. Upon approving this motion, it will revise the board policy to allow parents and guardians of district resident children that do not reside in the district to speak, as well as all faculty and staff to speak during public forum, even if those people do not reside in the district. Um, this effectively will expand the public forum, um, and provide for more participation. Not, or reduce it anyway. Um, in addition, although it's not a policy, um, the staff, just through our discussions, um, some adjustments and clarifications on our procedures that we are going to use during public forum. Um, specifically, they have people that qualify to speak at the boards and throw up normal data on the table. And then, we ask that speakers introduce themselves. And, uh, speakers are familiar to people off the three mist and not concede there would be any time to promote features. Teachers may comment on matters related to pending agenda items against school heads. Comments or questions, any specific personnel or students are to be addressed by our meeting to clarify the rights of the individual. But not in public, such as discussing involved students or personnel matters. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual personnel or students should present their power and concern to superintendent during regular business hours. Please note that the board or board members will not respond to your questions or comments during the public forum. In an effort to avoid the rapid competitiveness, speakers are attending with other residents with similar info. We ask that the group designate one person to address the board as approved. The board president is responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and show move on such matters, including the time to be allowed for public discussion and the appropriateness of the subject being presented. The president shall have the right to discontinue any presentation which does, which does not follow meeting and the formal protocols. All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner, from seeing language or those statements threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. The board president deserves the right to limit the total amount of speaking time. We have also added the, uh, V O E at Cal-Lincoln-Lonan.org address for, uh, better accessibility for public concerns. Uh, my personal opinion is that can get, uh, results for anybody with concerns much faster. Uh, but everybody is still welcome to address us during public forum. Any other discussion on these revisions to our policy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And motion clear. Comprehensive developmental school counseling guidance program presentation.
Okay, so the counseling plan, we presented you some proposed changes from our previous plan. Uh, most of those changes follow the rules to our previous. You'll see some reformatted to align to the aspect national model, which I'll give you to explain a little bit what that is. Um, a more, more focused on moving students toward the mastery of a particular set of standards. Uh, a more comprehensive data collection process, which will allow us to regularly review our own practice and refine the work that we do. And in general, reformatted to, um, take into, into consideration of two buildings and the changes and the new role of our school social worker, open her to that plan as well. So in addition to, um, the commissioners' regulations speaks to exactly what needs to be in our counseling plan, but they also give us some example models of which we can align to. One of them being the national model of the American School Counselors Association, um, which for our purposes, I think meets our, meets our goals as a counseling department quite well. And they separate the requirements of a counseling plan into those four categories you see there. Our previous plan did a, um, a really nice job setting up a combination and articulating the delivery of services that we do as a counseling department. But the work that we knew that we needed to continue to progress towards was the management of that plan and really taking that critical look at the work that we do and making sure the activities that we are rolling out are meeting the needs of our students and holding ourselves accountable that they're, um, that they're effective in the long run. Uh, so a couple of changes in the foundation section. The regulations do require that we have a mission statement as part of the plan. If you recall, I share a mission statement with you, um, as part of the specialized department plan. And I've shared that mission statement across the departments within pupil services. Um, and they are all kind, they've all adopted that mission statement as well. So we now have one mission statement across the pupil services department articulated in each one. The foundation section is also, um, supposed to highlight what every student will receive as a benefit of the program, um, as they participate in it. And one way in which to do that is to align ourselves to a set of standards. So the same way that we have standards for our academic skills, um, we should have standards that our students will, uh, be expected to work towards mastery on in the area of social emotional skills, um, called re-reading and academic development. Um, so again, the American School Counselors Association does provide those to us, and you'll see those listed in the plan. They're separated into those three, um, categories there. Um, like I said, academic, career, and personal social development. And you'll see that listed as a standard. So I gave you an example up there, um, in the academic development, where the standard is that students will acquire the attitudes, knowledge, and skills that contribute to effective learning in school and across the lifespan. With a competency area of, for example, improving academic self-concept and what those skills, um, or indicators would be that students master in that area. There's, for example, displaying a positive interest in learning and taking pride in their work. Um, so it's similar to, um, to how a, the activities in a math classroom are aligned to ultimate set of standards, like our activities that we do as a counseling department to align to a set of standards as well. The delivery section of the plan, uh, like I said, our previous plan, um, did a pretty comprehensive delivery section. So only a few minor changes, um, in the tiered services section, really differentiated between the tiers, um, and articulating which activities are number one, uh, or an opportunity for all students to participate in, or really more targeted at a particular, um, group of students or individual students. And also differentiates those roles and responsibilities between the school counselor, school social worker, and the school psychologist. And, um, differentiating in those categories of whether it's academic, um, aligned, social, or psychology. Each section, um, all, also now has a goal aligned to it. So when you're, um, measuring the effectiveness of the activities we're doing, they're speaking towards an ultimate goal. Uh, we did have a pretty comprehensive activity chart, but it's just reformat a little bit. Again, separating into those categories with a goal clearly articulated at the top so that we know all the activities that are being done throughout the year that will hopefully lead towards progress in that goal area. The standard is also listed right out there. So for example, if you were to look back into the plan, it's a personal social standard of C-one point six that is, um, aligned to that activity. Um, and articulating how we would collect data within that activity. The last two sections are really where the bulk of the changes have come. Um, starting with the management section and then taking that critical look of, these are the activities that we do throughout the year, but how do we know that they're working? How do we know that they are effective or that they were the right activities? So throughout the course of the year, our providers are completing action plans for every activity that they do. So in addition to giving some details about the activity, then here I am answering three key questions at the bottom related to data. Um, the first being, what data told me this was an area of need? So why did I even decide that this was an activity that I was going to roll out? Um, where can I see that this, um, this, that our students need this, um, work in this area? The next one is, how will I collect the data? So, um, school counselors, uh, I can say as a school psychologist, unless we explicitly set out how we're going to collect the data, because our work can tend to be so qualitative, it's hard to then go back and collect the data unless we design it that way to begin with. So we want to make sure that before we're rolling any activity out, we know how we're going to collect data that says whether it was effective or not. Um, so whether that's taking a look at attendance data or designing a pre and a post-test for the activity, uh, whatever the case may be. And then lastly, setting a benchmark for success. So given how I'm going to collect the data, what might I hope that the data tells me that would say that this, um, this activity was effective? So a hundred percent participation in it, eighty percent of the students moving from this score to this score. Um, what is my benchmark for success? And now that we have, we'll have all of that data, we need to then use it to hold ourselves accountable. So as a mental health team, um, we are really hungry, reviewing the goals that we have set for ourselves. And reviewing the activities in our So as a mental health team, um, we are, we are monthly reviewing the goals that we have set for ourselves, and reviewing the activities that are aligned with those goals. That we have, um, rolled out so at that point in the year. We're then taking a look at that data that we have so far, what is the data telling us? Uh, where do we need to adjust, did that activity work? Um, did it work as intended, or does it need minor tweaks? Or was it something we want to replace with, with a different activity? Um, as a mental health team, we'll then make recommendations to an advisory council, which is required by a regulation, we have a established advisory council. Um, group of stakeholders that meets twice a year to receive that feedback and that data from our team. Um, and then make recommendations on future work. Um, after those two meetings, we will have a constant plan to review them for one year. So you will receive as before, and then you will report summarizing, um, the conversations that those advisory council would have around one year. And make new recommendations for the plan for your, uh, for the school year. Yes, in, in New York City, all schools are recorded, right, and I believe she has a. Everybody has their own way of only, not specific requirements of the plan, so this is how, um, the requirements of, um, school counseling.
Alright, now we will pass that, so, new business number ten. Approval of the comprehensive developmental school counseling guidance program. Resolved the board of education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the comprehensive developmental school. Counciling guidance plan for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, motion please.
Yep.
In a second.
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Period. New business number eleven, revision of part-time order for the accounts payable job description. Resolved the board of education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the revisions of the part-time clerk job position. Motion please.
Making.
In a second.
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion is period. Executive session. Resolve the board of education adjourned to the seventeenth session at six-fifty-three, the end to discuss. The employment and recording history of particular persons in confidential screen records protected by protocol, motion please.
I'm making.
In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Period, we'll be back.
If the red light's on, the light is on.
Alright, we are back on executive session. Uh, and we take the motion for personnel. One through seven, as that fourth in the agenda, and through one reservation of middle school high school secretary, who is on the plan. Viva Max's request, number, number two, Viva Max's request, number three, approval of long-term substitute. Number four, permanent appointment of plus driver, number five, resignation of cafeteria monitor. Number six, termination of support staff employee. Number seven, approval of substitute cleaner, motion for those seven, please.
I'm making.
In a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion is period. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Yep.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Everybody, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.